Good morning. I would like to welcome you to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM Tuesday, September 6, 2011. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, we need to add several items. The first item, under Public Safety, we are going to be adding the resolution in reference to the wrecker service ordinance. We will add that as Item E, under Public Safety. After we conclude Public Works, we are going to add the budget amendment items that Mr. Bush has requested be placed on this morning's agenda. We have two items there. And then following that, we are going to additionally add the extension of the moratorium on the adult entertainment. And with those items being added to the agenda this morning, I would ask for a motion to accept the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The first item is building and inspections. We have a resolution requesting approval of streetlights in the Telfair subdivision. Our presenter is Bert Foster, Building Department. That's Exhibit Number 1. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Before you this morning is a request from the developer of Telfair subdivision for a 13-light, streetlight district. Staff has reviewed the application and we are recommending approval of this request.
All right. In which commission district does this lie in?
This is District 2.
In District 2. All right. Mr. Holmes, I'll look to you for a motion regarding this. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Alletta. I'll look to you for a motion. I've changed your districts this morning. I'll look to you for a motion on this item.
I have one question I was going to ask. On the cost per light?
Yes, sir.
I was trying to quickly do something here. You're talking 15.85 per light, is that correct?
Well, there's actually two different power companies out there. There's 10 lights under Georgia Power and there's three lights under Central Georgia. Each power provider has a different per light fee. So we summarized them all under one fee for each of the 50 lots in Telfair.
Okay. Question somewhat unrelated, but is related in that is I was looking at something this weekend on the cost of the lights. Are the lights that we're being charged for as a county, are they different type lights than we have within subdivisions?
In some cases, yes, sir.
So they might be more expensive than a...
Yes, sir. A lot of the county lights that are over major thoroughfares, for example, Henry Parkway out here.
I was thinking specifically Jonesboro Road.
And Jonesboro Road, yes, sir. Some of those are the more high-intensity lights. These are just 150 watt, what they call traditional post-top lights.
That's fine. Thank you. Some move to approve.
I have a motion by Mr. Alletta, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. Moving on to Public Safety, we have a resolution requesting approval of an intergovernmental lease agreement with the city of Stockbridge for property to be used for a public safety center. Our presenter is Butch Sanders, County Manager, Exhibit Number 2. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, board. This is, I'm asking for the finalization, final approval for this intergovernmental lease agreement between us and the city of Stockbridge where we have agreed to pay $500,000 for the new and improved precinct space, the Harold Cochran Center located on North Henry Boulevard. We had some issues with this, but I believe it's been cleared up and all parties are in agreement now to the final form of the agreement.
And I know Mr. Bowman has been working very closely on this as well. And were there any comments that you'd like to add, Mr. Bowman?
Yes, I would. This has been a culmination of a number of meetings and actually goes back to our SPOS 3 where we had a number of meetings and also having certain items that we had to work through. And I feel like that this is a very fair lease and that we've come a long way to make it work. I think both sides have moved basically to the middle on it, we as well as Stockbridge. So with that, Madam Chair, I make the motion that we approve this item.
All right. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey. Is there any discussion from board members or questions? Mr. Alletta?
Somewhat confused, I guess. Maybe it's just me, the way I'm reading. Under casualty insurance, it encases upon the, it appears, the rebuilding, if there was a fire, that the city can terminate the agreement, which doesn't seem to make a lot of sense if they repair it and we still paid for a 20-year lease, that they could come along and terminate once the building burns and is rebuilt. And it sounds like, from this language, we could be thrown out.
The way the agreement reads, Commissioner Alletta, is that the term of the lease is 20 years. The payment that we're paying obviously does not equate to renting a building for 20 years for $500,000. So there is a give-and-take provision in there. The county can likewise be asked to be removed from the premises if the city forms its own police department and they need that building for their own police services. I think that was part of the negotiations that were ongoing since the exception of the SPOS. That this would always remain a city building and that they would have the right to take the building back at any time during the term of the lease.
But with all the money being paid upfront, basically if they decide a year from now that they want their own police department, the money we put in, they get to retain as well as whatever improvements exclusive of whatever equipment or whatever we put in there.
And the city put in over $2.5 million, I believe, in the construction of this?
We put in $500,000, but it's important to note that our half a million dollars is FFNE. And in the event that we should be asked to leave, we will unplug our computers and take our desk and our other equipment and things that we have in there. Our $500 covered FFNE. And, you know, there may have been some, I'm not sure about the numbers whether there's any left or not, but it was a very minor amount. And for the record, I don't believe that Stockbridge would ever want to lose us there because we're right in the middle of Stockbridge, number one. Number two, there's over, there's 100 people in and out of that precinct in each 24-hour period. Approximately 45 to 50 officers that leave that precinct and go out to all areas of the north end of the county because that is the north precinct. So this is in the best interest of Stockbridge to keep us there. And I think what they might would be concerned with if we decided to move, which we're not going to do that either, that I know of. But on the same token, Commissioner Alletta, the majority of that $500,000 was FFNE. And those are items that we can, like I said, unplug and take with us.
And items that also are covered with property insurance.
Right.
So basically, the half a million dollars, according to the way I read this, we're handing a check over to the city of Stockbridge. They're buying the FFNE or we're purchasing the FFNE from them that they've already paid for.
And it is by our specifications were given to Stockbridge.
Absolutely. New furniture.
They're actually buying the same thing that we would buy. The only difference is, I think, because of the way that was written, we had to give it to them to buy.
And one of the things I see we're responsible for is if we do any alterations to the building, is any of this half a million dollars to fix, to prepare the building for the condition we wanted, or it is the way we need it right now for a police precinct?
The reason, I think, for that is that this particular precinct, we have another 1,800 to 2,000-foot plus or minus of unfinished space. And it would be on us to do the alterations of that space because when we built it, we'd got more than we needed at the time. It's like three or four times larger than where we were in in Stockbridge from the beginning.
And we serve not only Stockbridge, we serve North Henry.
It's the whole, and I tried to make that plain, and I want to be sure that for the record, it is the north precinct for the entire north end of Henry County. And just because our officers go in there, they go in for roll call, and then they leave and go out to all areas of the north end of the county.
And all the utilities that we'll be responsible for or improvements that are needed before we move in are in this year's budget? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, all in favor of approving the motion? Motion carries 4-0. Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase firefighter equipment and accessories for new trucks. Our presenter is Chief Brad Johnson of the Fire Department, Exhibit Number 3. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The next three items on the agenda deal with the fire truck purchase that we took delivery of last month. And these are equipment to be equipped and to equip to put in service in trucks. The first one was a bidding process through our purchasing agency for this basic fire equipment. And I, myself and staff, elected to go with a split bid for the most economical results. We recommend Fisher Safety received awards from line 3, Item 3, for the amount of $34,935.92. Capital Supply, line 25, Items $34,713.38. Fire line, have four line items for the amount of $23,051. Dana Safety, 13 line items for the amount of $8,063.83. 10-8 Fire, six line items for the amount of $6,388. And Anderson Fire and Safety, four line items for $4,290. These are specified in the spreadsheet that are attached with the documents. And it is fire equipment for the new trucks.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Before I call for a motion on the resolution, I would ask that the resolution referenced specifically what those line items are. It currently says three line items, 25 line items, but in the resolution itself, it needs to specifically say what those line items are.
Madam Chairman, I have the same concerns that you did. And the resolution was revised in the attached Exhibit A. That's referenced in the resolution clause. Breaks that down by line item to eliminate that confusion. I had the same concern. And staff made the adjustment.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any additional questions pertaining to this item?
Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Alletta?
I understand from Mike Bush, this is actually monies that we already had, basically from the banks or whatever we had set aside. So this is covered. Now, we're just going to draw that money down to pay for these items. Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Alletta, we usually do a total package where we buy the fire truck equipment as one package. This year, we decided to break it out. We thought we'd get a better price. And we're actually about $10,000 less than we paid for the two trucks in '06 by breaking it out and actually brokering ourselves and eliminating the middleman.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution with a split award of the bids, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Alletta. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for fire rescue equipment, and that's going to be Exhibit Number 4.
All right. Our next item is for our extrication equipment for our two trucks. This equipment's used for auto extrication, for light extrication for our vehicles to be placed in our engine apparatus. We, 11 vendors were sent notifications, plus the internet, and our regular purchasing procedures were followed. We had one vendor send favorable results back, and it was Fisher Scientific for the price of $22,990.
Do you know, or can you speculate as to why there was only one vendor who submitted a bid on this? Is this not a very common item?
It is a common, well, it's brand-specific. It's TNT Rescue Tools, and it is a brand-specific we use. We do have a common connection, a common fluid use as our other equipment we have on our other engines. There are only two vendors in the state. We were contacted after the bid process that one of the vendors did miss his bid opportunity, and it was their fault. They did not reply in time due to office clerical mistake on their part.
Are there any questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you awarding the bid to Fisher Scientific Company, LLC, in the amount of $23,990. And I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Alletta, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase Scott air packs and accessories for new fire, for the new fire engines, and that's Exhibit Number 5.
Madam Chair, our last one is for this self-contained breathing apparatus from Scott. These also are brand-specific. We had seven vendors sent out, we sent to seven vendors. Three vendors submitted bids back for these particular brands. Fisher Scientific did produce the lowest amount at $32,735.20. This is for the air packs and the voice amplifiers.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Fisher Scientific Company, LLC, in the amount of $32,735.20. And I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Alletta. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners clarifying the role of the Henry County Board of Commissioners under the wrecker service ordinance. That's handout number 3. And our presenter is Butch Sanders, County Manager.
Yes, ma'am. This really is a clarification, I think, needed due to the many turns in the discussion that we have had concerning wrecker services in the county over the past several weeks. I look at this as a clarification and also a confirmation, giving direction and providing administrative authority to the wrecker services committee. Upon a close reading of the ordinance by the county attorney, we've put this together to provide this type of direction. And basically, we have an ordinance that provides for a wrecker services committee. It also provides that they would be the group that reviews all applicants to become a qualified wrecker service for the county. And as I said, with the county attorney's reading of the ordinance, I think it's important that the board confirm that direction to the committee and clarify that it is not the board's role to be involved in that formal approval process.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Bowman?
I have a comment about it because I think a lot of this was brought on by an email that I received from our county attorney that basically stated that because it met the ordinances and met the requirements, that we had to vote in approval. And I don't have to vote in approval for anything. That's what I was elected to do, was to vote my conscience and not be told what I had to vote for. And our attorney, Ms. Latonya, understood that. We had a long conversation over it. And I don't feel, I feel like that it needs to be stated that, you know, we had a motion, we didn't get a second. There's been a lot of conversation over it. But in actuality, it's an issue that should have not have came up to start with. Am I correct, Ms. Wilder?
You are right. In past years, the board has not made formal action on wrecker service designations because you did vote to approve an ordinance, giving, delegating that authority to the wrecker services committee. So that was the board's official vote. And that committee, overseen by the county manager, administers that ordinance through that delegated authority. And so you are correct. And what we did the last board meeting was we were trying to, I think, just for housekeeping measures, make everything consistent with what the board did a few months earlier in formally approving the list. That action was not necessary either because, again, the committee can make that determination. So what the county manager has drawn up is a resolution that clarifies the role of the wrecker service authority and the board's role. Now, you do retain some authority and the authority if the wrecker service committee denies an applicant. Then that applicant can appeal to the board, and you can overturn or review the wrecker committee's decision. But in the first instance, the decision is that of the wrecker services committee.
Thank you very much. And I feel like that that needed to be said, just for the public to hear. We know that, you know, there's times when certain things meet the ordinances. And really, when those times are in effect, there should be no vote by the Board of Commissioners if, in fact, we have turned that authority over to a committee. So having said that, I appreciate the opportunity to explain why I did not second. It had nothing to do with anything other than the fact that, you know, we shouldn't, you know, we wasn't supposed to be there. So anyway, I appreciate it, and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Tom, let me ask you one question. Under a situation where somebody was either suspended or wanted to file an appeal, at that point, that could all, it could roll all the way back up to the Board of Commissioners, correct?
It could. If an individual company was suspended for violating the ordinance, there is a hearing process that's set forth in the ordinance. I think that hearing is held before the county manager, and that decision is reviewable by the Board of Commissioners. So ultimately, if someone feels that they are aggrieved under the ordinance or has been wrong under the ordinance, then following the appeal process, it ultimately will come back before you all to make that final determination.
And just like Mr. Bowman made comments concerning why he didn't vote, I feel the same way. We were doing something that had already been done, and the requirement should have rolled back to the wrecker board, the wrecker authority, which has the authority to approve somebody or disapprove. The only way it would come to us, if there was a suspension involved or an appeal process involved, that step is still in place, correct? That's what I wanted to verify.
And speaking to those points, a part of this resolution also includes a rescission, rescinding of those previous actions.
Are there any additional questions? Mr. Alletta?
Two questions, not necessarily regarding this, but regarding wrecker service. And that is, to the extent I'm getting complaints from about various, a wrecker service, how is that resolved?
How is that resolved? There is a hearing process. Once the documentation is received, and there's a hearing process where those charges are vetted with the wrecker service.
Is that through the committee itself?
Yes.
And then the committee, if they find those items of complaint to be true, suspend or take privilege or what?
Correct.
Is that, that's the, the other one is regarding the, seems to be a lot of question regarding territories or splitting up the county. Is that also something that is in the hands of the committee to do or not do, or decide how to do?
Correct. And we are, we are in discussion with all of the current providers over the best way to do that. And also the potential for a new ordinance, an amended ordinance.
Okay. Because that seems to be most of the controversy I've been hearing, maybe none of the other commissioners. But that's been the biggest concern that I've heard is that the way in which we've all of a sudden changed from what we were doing to where we're going or have done. So that's under consideration. That's good.
My next comment was, who was the committee?
Excuse me?
Who was the committee?
Myself, Don Ash, and Keith Nichols.
Mr. Stamey?
There's a gentleman here that's here with the wrecker service, I think. And can you possibly tell him when the wrecker service is planning on meeting again? Because I'm sure he's going to want to know at that point, when is he going to be approved?
This week.
Okay. If you'd like to, sir, we can even give you a copy of this ordinance that we're putting on today, too, just for your record. But if you want to talk to Butch afterwards, he can tell you a time and place that the wrecker committee will be meeting. That way, you can get your, either get approved or figure out where you are in the lineup.
Are there any additional questions?
Madam Chairman, I want to make a clarification. The county manager correctly notes that the resolution before he does rescind the prior board action identifying these wrecker ordinances by wrecker services. However, it does not affect the status because, as I understand, each of those wrecker services previously approved met the criteria. So that will not be affected by this resolution today. And the corner lot applications, I understand, from the county manager's statements from the last meeting, and my review of the documentation from the committee, also met the qualifications. So I just wanted to make that clear for the record so you all won't get phone calls that someone's been taken off or removed from the list.
Any other questions? All right. Just so that everyone's clear on what we're doing here, this is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners clarifying the role of the Henry County Board of Commissioners under the wrecker service ordinance. And to reference the final paragraph in the resolution, the Henry County Board of Commissioners rescinds its previous action regarding wrecker service qualifications and directs the wrecker service committee to make said administrative determinations as provided for in the ordinance. The rescission will not affect any currently approved wrecker services. If there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion on this item.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is under Public Works. We have a public hearing. Request for partial abandonment and to declare surplus a portion of Mount Carmel Road. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director. That's Exhibit Number 6. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. We have a request this morning for a partial abandonment and then to declare surplus a portion of Mount Carmel Road. As shown in your Exhibit A, when Georgia DOT constructed Jonesboro Road, they realigned Mount Carmel Road. When they did that, they shifted it significantly to the west, causing our old right-of-way to be completely unused, leaving that as a remnant parcel. The property owner that, I would guess, I would say abuts that on the east side, has petitioned for us to declare that surplus so it could be made available to him. As far as the DOT, we have retained enough right-of-way there that we feel like will carry us into our future needs. So what we're petitioning there for is the abandonment of all of that additional right-of-way in front of the property. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this portion of it.
All right. Before I ask for comments from the board, I do have a question for the county attorney. This, we have a companion resolution following this that has to do with the sale of the surplus property. And I noticed in your comments that there were some concerns expressed about how that was going to be sold and who was going to end up with the money. And so it may be good just to have the full discussion along with this. And maybe you can bring the board up to date on what your thoughts are concerning the Henry County Water and Sewerage Authority.
Okay. And Mr. McMichael and I have resolved those concerns and issues. So we'll be happy to, together, to explain to the board what we've done.
If you'd like, okay. The old road used to come up through here. When it was realigned, it was moved over to here. And this is where it is today. What the county, this petition, is to abandon this section right here. This piece of right-of-way actually belongs to Georgia DOT and is currently being advertised. And I think the property owner, Mr. Irwin, who is here today, is trying to buy this parcel. But what we're asking for today is this. So what we have done today to address the county attorney's concerns, we have updated the appraisal. So we do have an updated appraisal that I will hand out in just a minute. So this parcel here is abandoned. Mr. Irwin owns, this is the side property line. This is his original property line when he used to front the road. Then now, his property line along Jonesboro Road is here. So he owns the property all in here. What he is asking for is for us to abandon this old right-of-way, declare it surplus. And then he has made us an offer for that project, which is, I think, on the next agenda. In addition, he's pursuing this parcel from Georgia DOT. So when he gets through, his new, he will acquire this bidder piece, and that will put him, his right-of-way, then fronting all here. Right now, the edge of pavement here, his property doesn't start to here, which is a good, probably 100, 120 feet average away from the right-of-way line. So he's real far back. So to make this property more usable, whatever, he would like to acquire all of this. This portion here from Henry County, this portion from DOD. Just as information, while this parcel is on there, this is again owned by Georgia DOT, but it's in the Jonesboro Road. When Georgia DOT did this project, they didn't have to acquire this piece of property because it was already Henry County's. It would probably be their desire to go ahead and put that as Georgia DOT right-of-way. And I'm sure in the future, we'll probably do some right-of-way swap as we have done in the past with that. But that is Henry County right-of-way, and it's actually will be involved in the Jonesboro Road all the way in the future. So I don't, I don't know if that answered or got you all the way up to speed or not, but...
The property parcel 2, which is the county's property that being, seeking to be abandoned, was valued at $10,800, according to a recent appraisal. The offer for the property is $15,835. So the offer exceeds the appraised fair market value, which addresses my number-one concern. And then the second of my concerns... And then the second of my concerns, the second of my concerns was, to what extent the county was going to utilize a portion of the purchase price to pay for the relocation of a water line that's on the property and pay that over to the water authority? And of course, Mr., I told Mr. McMichael that if the board authorizes the portion of the proceeds to be used for that purpose, then we certainly can take that action lawfully. But as long as the purchase, the, the sales price equal, is equal to or greater than the appraised value, my concern is satisfied.
Not having had an opportunity to review the appraisal prior to the meeting, and not being very familiar with, with this industry anyway, and perhaps Commissioner Stamey can shed some light on it, once GDOT abandons parcel one, does that change the value of parcel two and increase that value? Because now you are going to have direct access to a corner lot, basically, on a, on an improved roadway, Mount Carmel Road. Would that change the value of that property?
Our, our, that parcel, let me start with parcel two is eighty feet wide and probably... And the longest side is about 224 feet. That size parcel, the county's parcel would make it basically a remnant piece, small enough it'd be extremely hard to develop. The GDOT parcel is about .146 acres, so the combination of parcel one and two would be just under a half an acre. Again, I don't know what that could be developed as, but there's two different owners as well. Obviously, for Mr. Irwin to, for, for it to be beneficial for him to buy parcel one, he has to get parcel two, and then, then parcel one. Georgia DOT has declared it, by their standards, a remnant parcel, and they have actually advertised and ran that in the paper to sell as a remnant parcel. So I can tell you that they consider their piece a remnant, and in my opinion, and I'm not a real estate person, and certainly not a lawyer either, but, you know, an eighty-foot wide strip, again, we would consider as a remnant piece, and I have no need of it as far as right-of-way for the road and maintaining the road. So if he puts the two together, you know, is that, you know, I'm not sure, I'd probably have to go back and see an appraiser on that, but again, it's two different, it's two different owners, so it's not like we could put our piece together and make it something it is. In addition, if you, I think if you do that, right now, his access to Mount Carmel Road is through this wide right-of-way. If you sell these as remnant parcels, you're restricting his access from Mount Carmel Road.
Mr. Bowman, I think, would agree that these parcels are only worth what a buyer will pay for them based because of the, the size of the two properties. The value is gonna be combining the properties. And I think Mr. Irwin, being the gentleman, and being the buyer in the very back, he's a natural fit for the two up front, but, you know, if he, if it was someone different in the back, then quite naturally, they're, they're gonna wanna assemble these two properties. There's no value to build on either one of these properties without the other parcel, correct, Terry?
That's correct, especially parcel two. Half of that property, there's a fill, and half of that property slopes down extremely. So standalone by itself, I don't know how in the world you would develop on parcel two, because you couldn't fill to get it level without running off the parcel.
On the fact, side of the property line, there's a, there's a natural swell that's pretty deep, wouldn't you say? It's probably twenty, thirty feet deep, wouldn't you, Terry?
Well, there is a, in addition to, yeah, the drainage swell, there's also a water line that's in that parcel two that is an old asbestos line, and in, in addition to that, the Water Authority has told us that there is an active sixteen-inch ductile iron line that'll have to be relocated. As part of this deal, the county will, will pay half the relocation cost to relocate the water line. So one of the things I would need to do in the second resolution behind this one is amend that to allow the board to authorize me to, to relocate that water line. Again, I, I think as information, so the rest of the board members know, county manager has visited the site as well as Commissioner Stamey, and has looked at where these lines are, the conditions of the property, and real familiar with, with the details of it. The cost of the water line relocation was negotiated with the Water Authority and reduced some, but as it is today, our right-of-way has an asbestos line on it. When, when we're abandoning this parcel and later on selling it, the property, Mr. Irwin has agreed that he will acquire that property knowing that that asbestos line is there. So that would be part of the purchase of it. We would, and Latonya would make sure in writing that, that he was fully aware that that line stays there and he buys it as it is, knowing there's an asbestos line there as well. So again, if you look at the value of the thing and can it be used, all of that has to come into play as well.
One other thing, Terry, just for the record, is we've, we've been negotiating back and forth with Mr. Irwin on this piece of property for, right at two years, probably, back and forth.
At least two years.
And, and I know Mr. Letter and Mr. Holmes weren't on the board at this time, but at that time, we were looking about a $30,000 relocation fee a couple of years ago, when the, you know, Henry County Water and Sewer has reduced that relocation fee, which will save the county and the future purchaser, if we approve it today, it'll save him money too. So that's, that's a plus. I appreciate them doing that, too.
Mr. Bowman?
I think it's important to add that you, you brought up the asbestos line and the removal and remediation of that line. As long as we don't have to do it, I mean, it, that could be expensive down the road. It's always expensive to do anything with asbestos, as we all know, but that would impact the, the value of that property severely. And I, and I, I agree, I, I don't see how that piece of property's worth a lot with parcel one being owned by DOT and us not being able to do anything with it. My, my only question, and I think you've already addressed it, I just wanna be clear that we don't need any more right-of-way as far as Mount Carmel. We've got turn lanes or whatever we need for the fut-, you know, to take care of for the future, is that correct?
That's correct. What I asked to do with permission from Georgia DOT is we set the right-of-way line fifty feet from the existing center line of where Mount Carmel Road is today, and that will certainly take care of any future left turn lanes, right turn lanes, anything like that that we might have need of. I, in, in my crystal ball, I don't see a four lane going in there anytime within the next twenty or thirty years, so I feel like fifty footer right-of-way from the center of the road is adequate, and that's what we retained.
That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, so you don't think when they put in the, the managed lanes and there is an entrance and exit for those managed lanes on Mount Carmel Road, that that's going to increase any traffic to the extent that there would need to be some improvements along that section?
I think that would probably be, it possibly could be in fifteen, ten to fifteen years, possibly. But again, we have, you know, you can, if, if with curb and gutter section, you can do a four lane in a hundred-foot right-of-way, it'd be extremely tight, but you could do it.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Alata?
Real couple of quick ones. You mentioned earlier that, or you stated that the county would pay half the relocation. Is that being covered now by the new owner when we sell it, or are we still liable for half the relocation?
The property owner is willing to give Henry County $15,835 for the property. Of that money, then the county would be responsible for paying half the relocation cost, which is, our, our cost of that would be $11,027.
Of the fifteen, that's what the ten is for, to cover that half, that, so that'd have to be reserved, set aside, or whatever else is, not general funds, but money's allocated for the future expenditure of that relocation.
I think for my purposes, the county is receiving in excess of the fair market value. How and to what extent the board wants to expend those funds is within your discretion. So we're receiving at least the fair market value of the property, for the property. And then I think the separate inquiry that Mr. McMichael is going to ask you in the second resolution is to allow him to take a portion of those funds to pay for the relocation cost. You know, my position is that the county is not obligated to relocate it, but I think, Mr. Mc-, I think there is some discussion about the fact that we should relocate it, and so that's still a matter of the board's approval. But the mon-, the funds will be only restricted to the extent that you all restrict that.
My concern being later on, and we do, we're gonna be looking for $10,000 or whatever our share, and yet the money will be spent by that time, and we'll be looking for an expenditure, $10,000, whatever it is. But this, from a legal standpoint, you know, everybody hears the term asbestos and their hair's in the back of their neck goes up. I don't know the law enough, so I ask the county attorney this, and that is, if you knowingly sell something that has asbestos in it, do you carry any liability, even if you so cover yourself in writing that the party buying it knows that they're buying it and they need to take care of it? Or do you end up still retaining that liability until it's retained, until it's fixed?
Well, I, that's a huge question, and I guess lawyers crafty enough can always attempt to reach to the deepest pockets and try to make liability the role of the county. I think it's important to note that the, this is the water authority's line, so whatever information we receive and whatever money y'all ultimately approve to go towards the water authority for the relocation of the line, that I'm going to insist that there be appropriate protection for the county, such that the water authority is responsible for any asbestos-related issues relating to that line. The old line is asbestos, the new line, Terry, is not. So the line that will be relocated is not an asbestos line.
That's correct.
And what will remain under the property that Mr. Irwin will potentially get will be asbestos. So we will also make him appropriately aware of that in the closing documents and sign all of the necessary language to protect the county. So we're gonna make certain that, that's taken care of, and that there's no liability and/or the risk to the county is, is extremely minimal.
So basically, I think, as long as we are acknowledging it's there, and he acknowledges as a buyer, it's there, then that, in your opinion, takes us off the hook, and then it's between him and the water authority, I guess, to get it out of there and do what he has to do.
Correct, when the, we're gonna pay, we're not gonna remove it, the water authority we're moving.
No, we're, there's actually two water lines there right now, just so everybody's understanding. There's two water lines, there's an abandoned asbestos line, and there is an active ductile iron line. They're gonna relocate the active line into the land that we're retaining as right-of-way. So they'll be back in the county right-of-way with the new line. That active ductile line that's out there now will remain there as well. So you're gonna end up with two lines there, all right? The old asbestos, and if they relocate the line, the active line there, it'll stay there. It's ductile, it can be removed, sold for scrap iron, it, it's not a hazard, it's not a big problem. But rather than pay to have it dug up, easiest thing to do there as well is to leave it there. And then if, you know, if in the process of developing you hit the ductile iron, you simply just dig it up and haul it off to a scrap iron place or whatever you choose to do with it. It's not like an asbestos line. So rather than go to the expense, we're gonna leave both lines in place. So both of those will be, you know, noted. Again, the asbestos one is the one of concern.
And that I would imagine is considered hazardous, and remediation would have to be done to that soil to the extent it was dug up because the soil itself is contaminated as well, and that's not a cheap process. So again, it being owned by the water authority, I would assume that it's not our liability.
It's not our liability, and I didn't know that we were not gonna, so I, I didn't know that we were not gonna undertake any type of disturbance activities of the property to be abandoned, so, no, we're not doing anything to disturb those asbestos lines, and that remains the responsibility of the water authority.
Last item, and that is, as far as, and we just had this issue, we went through on something else, I think, as far as not having to advertise, now you mentioned GDOT is advertising for the sale of their parcel one as a remnant. This was not advertised, as I understand it, or was? It was advertised?
The abandonment was advertised, the sale of this was not advertised, and I think there's an exception.
The sale was not, the abandonment was.
The law, Georgia law allows, when there is a small, discreet parcel of property that's not capable of being independently developed, but would allow an abutting property owner to enjoy the highest and best use of its property, then the law allows you to sell the property, such property, to the abutting property owner. And I think the size and shape of this property renders it undevelopable as a discreet parcel by itself, and so we'll fall within that exception.
I just wanted to bring that up because that's something we just recently went through and learned, or learned that part of as we went through it, and therefore just to indicate that we don't need a bid based on the abutting property issue. Thank you.
Are there any additional questions pertaining this, to this item? If not, this is a public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here who wishes to speak on the partial road abandonment of Mount Carmel Road. If not, gentlemen, you have a resolution before you abandoning a portion of a public road known as Mount Carmel Road, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to sell certain real property located near Mount Carmel and Jonesboro Roads, thus exhibit number seven.
Chairman, board members, again, this is the actual resolution to sell it. We would like to amend this resolution to allow the Henry County Department of Transportation to fund the relocation, so that cost would be $11,027.07. Now that's their proposed cost, they'll actually come back and, and bill us once that work's done. If we, and, I think if we include that as an amendment to this resolution, the property owner's offer is contingent upon that water line being relocated or not leaving an active water line on that property. So if the board amends this resolution and authorizes us to agree or to contract or to allow Henry County Water and Sewer Authority to relocate that line, then I think he will see that we're following through with our portion of that agreement. So that's one thing I would like to make an amendment, and that's not in the resolution, so.
Resolution, item number one, will be amended to agree to sell the property for the amount of $15,835, with an approved purchase agreement executed by the parties. Paragraph two would authorize the Henry County Department of Transportation to use a portion of said funds to relocate the line. In paragraph three, I would just add that all necessary conditions concerning asbestos will be addressed in the closing documents. I think that would address everything we discussed today.
Mr. Alata?
Just one item in this, and that is that the $22,000 that the water authority estimate is, includes a 15% contingency, contingency fee, which is almost $3,000. Is that locked in concrete as far as that figure being part of the estimate, or is that only if they use the money as to whether the county- Or is that only if they use the money as to whether the county would have to pay that, say fifteen hundred dollars, being fifty percent?
Commissioner, that's a great question. It's my understanding that that contingency, because of the depth of some of these lines and things, they would like to put that in there so if something did come up, that they could be close to making or meeting the grand total of the twenty-two fifty-four. So what we would actually pay on would be the actual cost.
Well, let me, let me go the other way, then. To the extent that the contingency is insufficient, is the county's liability limited to half of the twenty-two, or does that figure continue to go up that the contingency is not enough?
Water Authority has came back and asked for additional funds on other projects when they give us an estimate.
Any way of blocking amendment? Tell them that's the most they'll get?
We have, we have negotiated on some of those in the past when those items came up. Not to say that if it didn't on this one, we would sure be asking for lots of explanations and things like that. So they're not, they're not just taking, we would look at it and see if it was justified, warranted, and then, you know, even meet back. We usually, if something like that, if it's something that we're not in agreement, we usually come back to the county manager. County manager may involve the board at that time if, you know, if we feel like that they're just being, if it's unwarranted or something like that.
Any other questions? If not, you have before you a resolution. We also need to make sure we note the changes that the county attorney has asked to be added to that resolution, and with those amendments to that, I will look to someone for a motion.
Motion to approve with the amendments.
Motion by Mr. Stamey to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for full-depth reclamation work on various county roads. That's going to be exhibit number eight.
This is a request for award of a contract for full-depth reclamation work on various county roads. The project was bid through the purchasing department, bid documents were issued to eight vendors. We had five vendors respond. The Department of Transportation would like to award the contract to Atlanta Paving and Concrete in the base amount of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. I might add, this is the company that has done our last two projects, and they have worked with us very well, completed on time, and have done an outstanding job. So we do have good experience with this company, and so we certainly would recommend award. We would, this portion of the reclamation, we would do this fall. Of course, we'd like to get started as soon as we possibly can before the weather gets where we can't pay. So be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any other question? Mr. Alata?
How many miles in total do these twelve projects encompass?
I did not bring, I know we try to do about thirty miles total. Sir, I'm not sure of the mileage. It's, it's bid per square yard, so I don't have the mileage.
We've talked in the past meetings, I know, and maybe it's been other meetings prior to my being on the board, that seems like we were looking at a per mile cost when we were looking and comparing one type of surfacing against the other, and I was trying to see the savings of doing this again versus the other pavings that we've had and approved. And the other concern for me is, in looking at that, I noticed there's one of the twelve projects are in District Two. Mr. Bowman's been blessed with five projects, but to my one, and, but maybe his five don't have as many miles as my one. So that's why I was trying to find out the equity in this, this bid for the various districts.
I would actually say, in this case, the less miles you have in reclamation means your roads are better off. So unfortunately for Commissioner Bowman, it just says he has some roads that are in worse shape, which we're very familiar with those particular roads that are on there in his district as well.
I get numerous phone calls and do call you about complaints from my citizens of their consideration, their roads are not in very good shape either. And so whatever pecking order or priorities you have, to determine that is, is an issue, then.
I guess, so the public will understand, we, we are doing about five miles in every district, all right? Based on your five miles, we look at those roads, and we determine, all of them need patching, we're just to the point, we, you know, we have to patch them first. If the roads do not have sufficient base under them, or they're broken up so bad that we have to do so much patchwork on it, if it's actually, it costs us on some roads more to go in there and mill out the bad asphalt, put back three or four inches of base, and then resurface it than it does just to reclaim it. So at some point, we look at both options. We look at whether it's cheaper for us to go in there and mill out the bad spots and patch it, or reclaim the whole road. Whichever works out the best is the one that we choose to do. And in your case, in your district, we chose that one road to do. All the rest of yours will still be resurfaced. You'll still end up with the same amount of miles, but we just have to do that one road. So it's part of a process here to get the same amount of miles done in each district and get them all done where they all last the same amount of time. So this is something I don't try to do. It's, it's a, it's a part of getting the roads ready to be resurfaced, the reclamation part is.
So this, these twelve are not the thirty miles, is what you're saying?
No, sir, we will, we will be adding another contract in the spring. So what we do, and, you know, we split it up into two contracts, one in the fall, one in the spring.
So basically, whatever the miles are per district here, when you bring the next one in the spring, the deficiency of the five miles to what's in here is what'll be seen in the spring one?
Yeah, I'm not sure which roads, I guess what I'm saying, under reclamation, you may have a bunch of roads, you may not have but one more.
I'm just trying to assure that I, in District Two, get the five miles. That's, that's the question I'm raising, that's all. And if you're talking about two bids to do it, that's fine. At this time, others are in worse shape, needing to be done now before spring, but I certainly don't want to take, unless there's an agreement beforehand with other districts for whatever reason, I would want to give up three miles of mine to let them have eight or whatever the case may be.
Let me add a little bit to that, and I don't want to use the board's time, but when we resurface, we don't try to do, this is about six months, our resurfacing program goes over a whole year. We don't ping pong back around the county. We typically start at one end of the county and work our way through, so we don't spend a lot of time moving. So it very well could be, you see so many in District Five and Four, that's where we're going to start, in the northern end, we're going to work our way from five probably to four, to three, maybe one, and two, coming around the county like that. We can be a lot more productive if we're not trying to balance the roads in a one-year time. It's better for us to proceed through the county in a logical sweep, if you will, and do the roads as we go, so we're not spending all our time moving the equipment.
Logical, I understand, but when you're starting from District Five and you go logically down, you're still west of seventy-five, and District Two is east of, or, excuse me, east of seventy-five, and District Two is west of seventy-five, so you're not going to go down to hit it. So logically, it doesn't hit District Two on that logic.
But I assure you in this year that you'll get your paving unless the money runs out, and if it does, then we'll proportion that out per district, so.
Assurance is what I need, that's all I was asking, Lord. Thank you.
I assure you, I'll do it as long as the money's there.
Does anyone else have a question or comments?
I think I'm going to have more than a comment at the same time. Mr. Alata had some comment about District Four. I believe that there's an awful lot of roads in District Four that's been paved longer than there have been in Districts One and Two. I know that the north end of District Two, there's, there's also a lot of older roads, but District Four and Five, like District One has a lot of dirt roads, I think District Two might have two or three, and most of the people that live on those don't want them paved, so we're okay there. But, yeah, I mean, I would have no problem, I don't know about Commissioner Holmes, but I'd have no problem if you wanted to start in One and Two and move up and keep the equipment moving, just in the fairness shape. But I do know, as well as you, that there's an awful lot of roads that are in poor shape in District Four and in District Five that need attention, and several of them, you and I have rode on, on several of them. But I think it's important, and I hate to take the time, but I think it's important that, that it's also stated that these roads are always done on a scoring system, and it's not by the whim of a district commissioner, regardless of what district it is, whether it's Four, Five, One, Two, or Three, that it's also done on a scoring system, and that we're not basically road commissioners, that we, you know, that you guys do that on a scoring system. Because I've had some, and, you know, I've got some serious questions about some of the scoring, especially over in Stockbridge, on Pinehurst, and on Charlotte Boulevard, and those, those areas, because, I mean, they're literally falling apart, but to that degree, I just, I know that that's the way that they're handled, and I do appreciate the hard work that you do. Thank you.
One other comment, that as we, how we determine and how we go depends on two contracts. We have a LARP contract and an L-MIG contract. A lot of times, too, where I start is which contractor I get and which money. I can't do those until I get those contracts. We're just days away from getting our L-MIG, so I had to start on the LARP, because we had money coming into that. Again, trying to make the money work with Mr. Bush is, is interesting, because you can't do the work before you get the contract. If you do the work before you get the contract, you don't get paid. So all of that comes into this mix of how we go through the county, is getting these contracts in place, make sure the money's there, and then do the works. And I'm sorry, Commissioner, I cut you off.
Just, not to carry you through, but just a couple of comments to that, and that is, the scoring system, yes, as I understand it, and as you and I have gone through some complaints from various citizens on the roads and the scoring, their scoring is rather low as well. Now, whether it's as low as the ones that are on here or not, I don't know, but I know they're below the seventy, which I believe is the one that takes, and I've got numerous ones that we've looked at, the fifty, so they're well below the seventy from a scoring standpoint. And the other is that, you know, I believe, and please correct me, but dirt roads, are they not covered in SPOLOST? Or do we use any general funds or other funds to do dirt roads? Isn't that all coming from SPOLOST?
Right now, currently, I don't have any, I have one funded dirt road improvement project that was funded about three or four years ago, well, from money that was generated probably five years ago in a, maybe even six years ago. I have one, one project in, in District One that was, but it did not come from general fund money in the last three, four years, I can assure you.
Here's my point, and that is that because the northern part of the county was developed first, and now has older roads, and thus they need to be repaired, and those repairs are going to have to come out of general funds as you're specifying, or LARP, or whatever else. And my district has many, many roads of dirt roads. My SPOLOST funds are used to do dirt roads, and other districts get to use SPOLOST to go ahead and build and improve roads that they have, or intersections and so on. So much of my money, as you know, has been used to develop dirt roads. And thus, now, maybe ten years from now, we can go ahead and take the general funds like the other districts do, to go ahead and repave them or reclamation. So I'm looking for, you know, the injustice, if there is any, and that's all, making sure that the funds are appropriate. I've got a district that's a lot of roads over there.
Actually, our resurfacing is being paid for out of SPOLOST Two and Three currently. It's not even coming out of the general fund, so if it wasn't for that, we would really be suffering.
My point is that I still have dirt roads that I've got to use out of SPOLOST as well, and other districts do not, so I'm limited as well, so.
I have one last comment I have to add, is the SPOLOST that we voted on several years ago was a voter specifically on the, on the roads. Those roads were designated in, in that project, in, in the list, so we don't even control those roads. If those roads were on a SPOLOST Two or SPOLOST Three list, that's the ones we're working on, correct?
You're talking about dirt road paving?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Any more comments?
It's not my list that we approved, it was the voters that approved that list.
I understand, but it's my district and money, and that's what I'm looking at right now.
I get a lot of complaints off of Elliott and Butler's Bridge, and I wish I had paid the money to do those two.
As, as an innocent bipartisan, I'd like to make a statement. You know, the, the needs are different in the county. It is true that we, that the roads were paved in the north end of the county, and it progressively came down. Our older roads are in the northern end of the county, and the need is, is an extremely large list of resurfacing up there. Because the roads have been there longer, there's a bigger need for resurfacing, more resurfacing in Districts Four and Five. Districts One, Two, and Three, you see more of a need for dirt road paving. So there's, you know, there's needs on needs, it just depends on how you want to do it. So in the SPOLOST programs, obviously, we look at that, and each district commissioner then, you know, looks at it and says, okay, I have these needs. District One says, I have these kind of needs, and that's, you know, the great part about that program, you can address those, whatever needs your district, you know, has. And that's, that's kind of what has been done.
Again, I've got 155 over there with all the warehouses and a two-lane road, one, one lane each way, short traffic and whatever else, and have no SPOLOST money to take care of it. I've got Bill Barred Gardner that was supposed to have been done, don't have money for it, expanding, or taking it from I-75, and again, instead, we're doing a dirt road over at Oakland and other dirt roads that have been done. So again, it's not just we need dirt roads done, there are other roads that need to be expanded, and quite frankly, in the case of 155 over there at seventy-five going out is a road that's, quite frankly, something the county needs as well for economic development, so.
Chairman, it sounds like a good time for a commercial for a tier of projects, I think.
Yes, there are a lot of projects on the, the T-SPOLOST list that lie south of McDonough just go around, and, and desperately needed. As you referenced, the 155 corridor, that was one of the top priority projects that made it to that list, so we will see how the voters feel about that next July when that vote comes up. This is a great debate. What I was sitting here thinking is how wonderful it is that we can have the debate, thanks to our local SPOLOST. We have the opportunity to take care of many of the road issues in the county in the absence of that. We would all be sitting here trying to explain to our citizens why we couldn't get out there and do anything in the county as far as transportation improvements, so it's, it's good discussion to have.
One other comment that probably needs to be made is, we're in the process of working on a memo to help answer some of these questions that Terry's brought up and that Commissioner Stamey's brought up about the resurfacing and things like that for projects. So we are in the work for getting with the county attorney and clarifying some of these issues, so we can come back to you and make things much clearer than they are, so we don't, so we're going to try to answer these debate questions in a memo to you as soon as we possibly can.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Last comment we're adding, too, while we're talking about SPOLOST is, if you remember, there was a Tier One and a Tier Two, correct, Terry?
Yes, sir.
And we're still in Tier One, even though mine and Tier One are just about finished, and I have some dirt roads in Tier Two that, that will be paved at some point. Hopefully, I can get them in next year, but we're still in Tier One, correct, Terry?
Well, we're doing some, yes, the projects, we're doing some engineering in the Tier Two in a couple of the districts, but that's just the engineering, because I don't, there has not been any constructional right of way, that kind of money, but.
What happened is, when the SPOLOST money went down, we had to cut our road projects down. So we all have lost road projects, just strictly because revenue from the SPOLOST wasn't what we originally projected it'd be, the two-hundred million we're originally, and now we're in the high hundreds, and we've all had to cut several, about five or six million out of each project, and every, every time you cut a million, you're cutting a mile of road in somebody's district that's not getting paved or getting improved. So we've all suffered in that, correct, Terry?
Yes, sir, we, we hope.
I hope to drag you in our conversation, but I think you have the latest and greatest records.
Well, actually Rocky would, but he's not here, but I'll do the best I can on that.
Mike, how do those SPOLOST collections look?
The last time I came before the board, it was at ninety-three point something percent of collections to meet our one-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar budget, and we're still right there in that same ninety-three, ninety-four percent range. We're actually creeping upwards, but, you know, it's, it's not by leaps and bounds, it's ninety-two point three, ninety-two point five, back to ninety-two point four, up to ninety-two point six. So it's just based on the collections that are currently coming in.
I think the only thing that's really helped us in the SPOLOST program is the, the price that these roads are coming in at, the improvements and things have come in well below what we anticipated they would be. So I guess there's, yeah, there's a trade, there's a trade-off in that.
And we had some terrible stimulus money in there, it was a big spark plug for everybody in the long run.
Absolutely.
I benefited from it, even though it didn't directly hit my district. I was playing in another district and got some of my
I was playing in another district and got some of my say-in back, so thank you, Mr. Bowman, for that, so. But without some of that money, we wouldn't be even going further as we are getting into our Tier One, even getting into Tier Two list.
Now, that made a big impact when you get 27?
Thirty-three. That road originally was awarded 33.
Thirty-three, and one project.
You know, very important that, there again, in my district in the north end, is that the bridge over the railroad tracks on Rock Quarry Road would not have been put in play without that stimulus money coming through, because when the stimulus money comes through districts, the other, I think it was District Three and District Five got seven or six or seven, I can't remember.
It was like 5.8, because we had to still pay for the right-of-way.
Yeah, they still paid for the right-of-way. So there was, you know, without that, it's very important because Rock Quarry Road Bridge would not have been done. That's a $6 million project. And, you know, we were talking about engineering. In Tier One, there was also widening of Rock Quarry Road, and what we're doing is we've got enough money to work on engineering, but we don't have any money to let any contracts or buy any right-of-ways, so it's true. I mean, you know, with the reduction in the money, it, without that, we would have, it would have, it would have been pretty sad for District Four. They would have ended up with Eagles Landing Parkway, but at the end of the day, that's all they would have ended up with. So, I mean, there's, now we got the bridge and we've got some things going on that's actually going to help that north end and that north end corridor, so. Hated to break in there, but, I mean, I felt like it was important to note that without that, the road over the bridge at Rock Quarry would not have happened. It just wouldn't have been there. All we'd have was engineering and a little bit of right-of-way, and that'd have been it. Thank you, ma'am, I'm sorry I broke in there.
Does anyone else have a question or comment?
Shut up, I was repaying them.
Not you have a resolution before you awarding a bid for roadway construction for a Henry County DOT to Atlanta paving and concrete construction in the amount of $788,650, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. All right, the next and final item under Public Works is a resolution requesting award of a bid to purchase reinforced concrete drainage pipe, thus exhibit number nine.
Board, we have put out for bid some concrete pipe where we are making improvements to Higgins Road, so we put all the concrete pipe that's required for the project in a bid and bid those out. The department would recommend award to Hanson Pipe and Precast in the amount of $19,092.8. They were the most responsive and lowest bid for, the overall lowest bid for the project.
Does any board member have a question or comment?
I have a question. Just for clarification, what district is Higgins Road located in?
It is in District One.
He was trying to get you, Brad.
No, I just wanted to clarify, no, no, I promise I was, just for clarification.
At $19,000, if it was $1,000, $780,000, I was saying.
Mr. Bowman?
Is this delivered to the site?
Yes, sir.
So the only reason I ask that question, I don't know where Higgins is located, but Rinker is in the city of Stockbridge, or I think they're in the city. They're in Stockbridge regardless, so I didn't know if that was, if we were having to go and get it, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to cost us more in the long run to go pick it up. As long as they're delivering to the site, I'd say we'd fine.
Yes, sir, they will deliver.
Any other questions? All right, if not, you have a resolution before you awarding the bid for the purchase of the concrete drainage pipe, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion for?
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. All right, moving on to our budget amendments, Mike Bush has two items to bring before the board. The first item is a budget amendment for FY 2010, 2011, and that's handout number one.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Board. First, I'd like to take an opportunity to apologize to getting this to you at such a late minute. Our audit, our annual audit, will start this Thursday, and one of the requirements that we have each year is to adopt a balanced budget, make amendments to that balanced budget, and present a final balanced budget to this board. And what we've done today, and we were making changes as late as Thursday afternoon, to these budgets from the Tax Commissioner, some of the other elected officials who are working on their own financial statements to get prepared to give them to us. We are, again, here today to show you the budget amendments that we had to make, and let me break this down into real simple terms. We have a budget of $1,000 for electricity. We spend $800 on electricity during the year. For auditing purposes, we're required to go back and make our $1,000 budget equal to $800, what we spent. So we're clearing up that expenditure, and on the same token, if we have a grant that comes in middle of the year and we have a zero balance, but zero budget for it at the beginning of the year, we've collected $10,000 by the end of the year, we have to increase the budget, the revenue budget, by $10,000, and balance out with an expenditure budget by $10,000. So these are, these are requirements for our audit. There are numerous debits and credits, if you will, for the general fund and all the other funds, and we will be putting this on the website to, on the agenda type thing for people to see. I don't know how much detail you want us to go into, you know, other than to say that in the general fund, we are debiting and crediting budgets, not actual expenditures. We're just moving budgets to match the actual expenditures in the amount of $7,951,819. Same thing in the Law Library for $185,854. Our NSP One program for $3,454,369. Our NSP Three program for $991. Narcotics Fund for $3,486. E-911 and $701,000. Public Safety Grant Fund, $651,000. Special Revenue Fund, $272,000. Technology Fund, $20,000. Juvenile, juvenile special funds, $22,000. Economic Development Fund, $213,000. Hotel Motel Fund, $30,000. Henry First, our 501(c)(3) Fund is $9,433. Capital Fund, $1.2 million. Capital Lease Fund, $5.7 million. Impact Fee, $567,000. Debt Service, $1.3 million. And Stormwater, $276,000. These are all debits and credits that match one another so that our budget is ready to be presented to our auditors for the audit work to begin. Do you want us to go line item by line item? Do you want us to hit the high points? Do you want us just to put it on the board? I know we've had a couple of conversations with several of the commissioners in regards to this actual final step for preparing for the budget that'll start on Tuesday. How would you?
I would just like to ask if any board member has questions pertaining to this item, because I know you had an opportunity to discuss that with me, I'm assuming with the majority of the board as well, over the last few days.
I'll just, can comment, I met with Mike and Andrew, went over this, took quite a few hours to do it, and you can't go over each single item because there are $60, $100, $1,000, and whatever. We did go over probably at least the scope of all the items over $100,000, and probably even some items between $30 and $100,000 to get an explanation of them. There were a couple items that weren't, at the time, you didn't have answers because there multituded the items, and since then have gotten those answers. I appreciate the time to do that. Let me just comment this way, and you explained it, but let me just maybe reiterate it again. And I'll say it sort of this way, and it's going to sound bad, I guess, but this is the dumbest process I've ever heard, quite frankly, from a business standpoint. You create a budget, and at the end of the year, you're over budget or under budget, and you leave it alone, and you say, I'm over budget or under budget. What this is basically doing is creating basically, or has as it is, if you would, a set of books in addition to your actual books that you evaluate your operations from and say, I want my budget now to equal what's over there, which, that's why I say it's somewhat, in my opinion, dumb, but it's creating a lot of makeshift work to do nothing more than, if you would, vary the overdoses of income or shortages of income in each of those accounts, and so to every account that your general ledger includes is going to require some entry, which is why this is so voluminous. But it is part of the governmental process of accounting, so I understand that, so it has to be done. So just for clarification purposes of that, just one item, and that's the general funds, where you do say it's $7,900,000 again, that does not mean that there was income greater than $7,900,000 or where there were expenditures greater. That's just the totals of the debits or the total of credits which have to balance, and that could be $3.5 million of additional income that we didn't have that you're balancing the budget to, or $3.5 million of less expense and vice versa. So the number itself, although large, has no real bearing on whether, in fact, it is an over expenditure or under expenditure and vice versa on the revenue side. So the numbers, as I said, are staggering, and again, have no real effect on anything other than creating this set of books that in business you wouldn't have because your budget is set, and at the end of the year, whatever it is, it is, and in this case, we're making the two agree, as you said. So it's the process you have to do, and too bad you have to spend all that time doing it, but it is, is what it is, so that's all.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution on the budget amendments, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Alletta, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The next item is also a budget amendment for FY 11 and 12, and this is going to be transferring some funds from various department accounts to various department accounts and adopting a budget for the airport, and that's handout number two.
Yes, ma'am. This one, I might go on over this one, this one's a little shorter. We did have a couple of general fund activities that, once we adopted the 2011-12 budget and the current budget, which was the 10-11 budget, we had some changes that took place. So because those changes took place in 10-11, it really adjusts your 11-12 budget. So we made, there was $32,764 worth of changes, and one of those is a $30,000 general entry where the Life Management Solutions Professional Account was transferred to the Sheriff's Account because the Life Management Solutions did not maintain services in the 2012 budget, and so we shifted it over once that happened. And again, that's $30,000 of the $32,000, the other is $144, $33, $204, very small issues. The other thing that we're doing with this resolution is, as you all are aware, last week, or Friday before last week, closed on the airport, and since the airport is now owned by Henry County, we have to adopt a balanced budget for all revenue, all general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, capital projects funds, and this is an enterprise fund. It's just, it's, we have one other enterprise fund, which is our Stormwater Fund. So this is a balanced budget of $941,000 in revenues and $941,000 in expenditures for the 2011-12 budget for the airport. I realize that we're not in a full year, but we didn't go back and break out the year because we bought it, and then there's still some stuff that's still the transition going on with the financial statements and things like that for the airport. So we just said, we'll set a, we'll adopt a regular budget, we'll amend it through time during the middle of the year, somewhere around January, December, or January, February, and then we'll come back again at the same time next year and do a final budget, which actually shows exactly what activity actually took place. We are creating an estimated budget, or guess, and then we come back, and as Commissioner Alletta said, one of the main reasons we have to do this is every year, they go back and they look at whatever of special, of revenue account, you had a revenue account last year of $9,000, this year it's $10,000, but your budget's $22,000. You have to say, they want to know, why is your budget $22,000 versus your, you know, actual revenues of $10,000 this year and $9,000 last year? So instead of having to go and answer 30 pages worth of questions, we do this step, again, an extra step, so that we don't have to do that.
And the information on the rental income, sale of jet fuel, that, you didn't just pull those numbers out of the air, you actually used information that's currently available at the airport.
We had financial statements from Clayton County, and we used those to help create this budget, yes, ma'am.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
Just reinforce, again, what Mike said, and that is that this is a balanced budget. People have speculated on the cost of the airport, and again, $941,000 of revenue, as you mentioned, primarily from sale of jet fuel, rental income, rental income's pretty well set right now, if I'm not mistaken, County Manager, Mr. Bush, that rental income is pretty much set already with leases that are out there.
Yes, that's correct. These are based on historical numbers, but you also have to remember that we have vacant space, that we have made it very clear that we are looking for tenants, and.
But this number, as I recall, is what is presently being leased, so it's not like we're looking. And the other, which, $717 of the $941 is fuel, and to the extent, obviously, that fuel is not sold and the expenditures are not going to be taken into consideration as well. So it's, again, as you said, a balanced budget based on history and, again, balancing it, getting expenditures to equal what income is, so.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the budget amendments, and I will entertain a motion.
Motion for?
Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. At this time, we have before us an adult entertainment moratorium extension. Michael Harris is going to present that item. And as he's walking up, I reiterate this each meeting that this comes up, because we're swamped with emails every time we have the discussion, there is no pending application for an adult entertainment center, or whatever you call these places, in Henry County. This is preemptive to try to make sure that we have the ordinance in place that will protect the county and the citizens of Henry County in the event that someone chooses to try to relocate a business such as that in this county. And so this is in reference to the ordinance that we're working to adopt.
That's correct. Welcome, good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Madam Chair. We're working closely with our legal department, and we have been vetting this process for quite some time, as we have extended the moratorium on a few other occasions. Received some additional information late last week that we felt was prudent and pertinent to what we were proposing, and felt it was in the best interest to go back through, go through that information, see how it impacts, and see, we need to go back and perhaps modify our proposed ordinance, and so we're asking for, once again, to extend the moratorium to October 18th at this time, to table this item for today, extend both this item and the item, there's two actual items. One, to make adjustments within Section 3-17, and also, it was advertised for adjustments to, amendments to our ULDC as well, as it impacts some of those sections as well. So we're asking to be able to table those, both those items until, until October 18th, October 18th Board of Commissioners meeting, and also extend the moratorium to October 18th as well, to give some time, again, continue to kind of go back through and review this latest information.
Okay, so the motion that we need is to table items pertaining to amendment of the ULDC and Section 3-17 of the ordinance, and to extend the moratorium till October the 18th.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, any questions or comments from board members?
We do.
The adult entertainment ordinance.
It's not on the agenda, is it?
No, but it was in your exhibit books, and the moratorium expires today.
That, I knew the moratorium, but I didn't know that it had something on the agenda, that's why I was wondering.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we, first of all, table the ordinances as we, as you presented the ordinance, and also to extend the moratorium till October the 18th, 2011.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, County Manager has a resolution requesting approval of cooperative agreements with the cities regarding the planning and programming of CDBG funds, and that's exhibit number 10.
Yes, ma'am. This is one of several steps we have to go through with Housing and Urban Development to receive our CDBG funding next year, and they are, there are four resolutions that I'm asking you to approve, where four different, separate, local cooperation agreements have been adopted by the four cities in Henry to join with us in cooperatively and participate together in the upcoming CDBG entitlement program. And I believe there are four, and Latonya, they all need to be approved separately, correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Alletta?
I was at Hampton, and now they were wondering whether they should or shouldn't opt in and opt out on this. One of the big questions, of course, that they raised was, how are these monies going to be allocated? to be allocated? I was trying to go through this to see if there was any formula or anything in this resolution or anything into. Has that been set as to how this money would be allocated amongst the cities and the county?
No, there is not a set formula for that, Commissioner. They will be involved in the, in the planning process, in the development of the consolidated plan, and there are going to be many, many projects that overlap. For instance, a potential senior center in Hampton is an available project. That is a project that I think that you and the other commissioners support. Determining whether or not that's a city project or a county project would be very difficult, trying to meet any type of formula system. I think that overall, we will have an objective to do something along the lines of the lost formula, like we do joint projects with the cities, but there is not a set formula in the agreement.
By having the cities as part of this cooperative agreement, and I understand, at least Hampton, I think, had never gone and received any funds prior to this, and I understand if you haven't history, haven't got history of getting these funds, it's difficult to get them, so this makes it easier. By having all four cities as part of this agreement, does that in any way help us to get a larger amount of money since they are included, or does it end up just being about the same?
No, it doesn't. We will get our allotment, whatever comes out in the budget. Right now, it's estimated at about seven hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars a year.
So there's no advantage of the county, if you would, to have the cities part of, participating there?
No, sir, there's no.
Dollars and cents, right, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we're going to take these resolutions one at a time. The first one is a resolution entering into the cooperation agreement with the City of Hampton for the CDBG funds, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Alata, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The second one is the agreement between the City of Locust Grove and Henry County, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The third is between Henry County and the City of McDonough. Motion to approve by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. The final is between Henry County and the City of Stopbridge. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is approval of the minutes from the August first workshop meeting. Are there any additions to these minutes? Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Alata, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. Before I move on to public comments, I do want to recognize a group that's here today visiting with us. We have the senior class from Bible Baptist Christian School over on Mount Carmel Road in Hampton with their teacher and sponsor, Mr. Andrew Henry. And we're certainly glad that you were able to join us today, and I think you got the full gamut here, from transportation to adult entertainment. You just, you got the full meal deal today and a little bit of healthy debate to go along with it, but that's what government's all about, and we're certainly glad that you're here with us today. And of course, we would like to get a photograph of your class with the Board of Commissioners, if you don't mind us being in the picture with you, and we just ask you to come up to the front. We certainly appreciate Mr. Henry bringing his class in every year. These are some of our future leaders, and it helps if they have an understanding of government and not to diminish his exciting classes, but sometimes the hands-on experience sort of takes a little bit more than reading it from a book. So thank y'all so much for being here. The next item on the agenda is public comments. We have two citizens who have signed up for public comment, and this is where they are allowed to voice county-related concerns that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. And all persons wishing to speak must sign up with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. When you come forward, you need to state your name and address for the record and the specific topic that you are speaking about, and you will have five minutes to address the board. The first comments today are from Tom and Frank Patrick. Yes, if you would, please come up to the microphone. And if you could state your name for the record.
My name's Frank Patrick.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning, I'm Tom Patrick.
Well, we wanted to talk to you about the McDonough Parkway Extension Project that they're having on here on eighty-one. The, we went to the meeting, the public meeting, that pretty much outlined what they had planned. And, I mean, we're just totally against it. I mean, we want to stay, you know, our business is on McDonough Parkway near the extension. They want to bypass our total business and move the intersection a hundred feet up the road. We still don't understand why. They claim, you know, it's the right of way down there where there's a bank that's not even in business anymore. And our type of business does need exposure to traffic, and we're just really upset that, you know, they would plan this. I mean, there was a Plan A, but there was no Plan B, there was no Plan C. I mean, there's only one plan, and I'm asking them, why can't we use the road that's already there and make it wider? And I still haven't gotten a good answer out of that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, when, at the, one of the things they brought up at the meeting was that it took about eight months to come up with this proposal, and that if this isn't, if this isn't kind of pushed, if this isn't pushed through, the money will be lost if the proposal's not accepted in May, the state funds will be lost. And, you know, it just, it, it just, it doesn't really make a lot of sense, like Frank was saying. I agree that, you know, the, the way they want to, I don't know if y'all seen this, how it's laid out or how this proposal's taking place, but the thought is that one day this is going to be four-lane. This is McDonough Parkway. I don't know if, remember where McDonough Parkway is? It's a little cut-through road that connects Jonesboro Road with eighty-one-twenty. And there's been, you know, they're developing the road, the road has got a bridge, they, I think the idea is to connect it forty-two with one fifty-five one day. But Mr. Terry was saying at the meeting that connecting it from McDonough, from eighty-one-twenty all the way over to Henry Boulevard down the street from here is years and years down the road finishing that section of it. And it just doesn't, it, I think that if some other, if some other people looked at it with an open mind, that they'd see that there's things about it that just, that just don't make sense. Using the existing road looks like a much better plan.
Mr. Stamey, is this your district or is this Warren's district?
I think it's Mr. Holder.
Okay.
He was at the meeting.
He was at the meeting. Did you have an opportunity to speak with him at that time?
Yeah, he said, come here. This is where it's got to happen.
Yeah, he said, this is a good place to start.
Well, this may be a good place to start, I'm not sure this is where it's going to happen, but I think that, is Terry, was this a concept or is this the actual engineered plans?
We are way along in the, in the plan. But this was a concept meeting and as such to bring the public up to speed of where we're at in this project. So the alignment they saw was, if you're familiar with where McDonough Parkway currently runs between a bank and a service station, the part of this plan relocates that intersection on the east side of that bank. And there was a lot of reasons for that. The original plan did have the road tying in where it was at. That was studied and researched and alternate was looked at, and the concept these gentlemen are referring to was shown at that meeting, which showed it to the east side. As a result of that meeting and talking to the commissioner, we're going back and we're doing an updated cost analysis on which two of those locations make the most sense. So as a result of that public meeting and their public input, we are going back and reassess and do an analysis on, going back to the alignment they prefer, which is the existing road bed. There was some problems, some pretty severe problems leaving the road where it's at today. So all of that will be looked at in this updated analysis. That analysis was done originally probably maybe two or three years ago, so we're going to update that based on current appraisals and impacts. There's some environmental impacts, there's some impacts to businesses as well, if we go to that existing alignment. So I can assure you, there was, there's, there's issues on both sides of that, I would say. And it, you know, just needs to be looked at and a termination made. And indeed, Mr. Holder may want that decision be made here or not, but we are looking into it and we are updating that as well.
And do you have these gentlemen's contact information to get back with them and have further discussions?
We do. They left their information at our public meeting, so we have that information.
Okay, and you make sure you keep them apprised of everything as you go along?
I mean, just being a layman, I'm really not sure how these decisions are made. We're going to just cut this business off and put in the road over here. And I just, I don't know who makes that decision. I, it doesn't, do y'all make the decision or does Terry make the decision or?
We typically look to our DOT to make recommendations for the best alignment for roads as, because they're engineers, and we, we're not, obviously.
Yeah, well, I'm not either. You know, it's not like we're cutting off a subdivision where there's houses and you can, you can take the little back road in. I mean, we've got our whole lives tied up in this county.
Right.
And for them to tell us that, oh, your road's not going to be improved, even after we fix this intersection up here, you're still not going to get a red light down there at the BP where they need one, I don't know anywhere in the county worse. And that's what, it's even worse, you know? They're going to make this big fancy intersection up the street on the other side of the bank but leave the other one where we are exactly the same way.
Well, and we also have to have approval from the Georgia Department of Transportation because we'll be crossing their roadway right there. Twenty-eighty-one belongs to the state, and so they will dictate a lot of what we do as well, and I'll have to approve alignments and things like that.
Yeah.
And I know Terry also referenced the environmental issues because we have, and a lot of people, and you've been here long enough, you're probably aware that there is a cemetery back there as well from the old work camp that was existing, and so there are some things that have to be taken into consideration.
Yeah.
But they will work with you and keep you, you know, apprised of what's going on, and if it's just a matter of shifting some things that can be done, you know, we try to work with citizens as much as we possibly can because we want your business to stay there.
Right.
It's good for the county, and so we'll do what we can to work with you on that.
Right. How are, how are other proposals introduced to the, to the DOT that, that they may consider? I mean, I guess what I'm saying is the, how, how would we proceed to try to, I mean, apparently there's a pretty sharp timeline on this and things are going to happen very quickly, and do you have any suggestions on how we might be able to have other options considered of how we would, we're not, I know there's no one here more qualified than Mr. McNichol, but I'm just saying that if everyone looked at it with an open mind, there might be some other options available.
Certainly, certainly. And I would say that a lot of that's going to rest on his shoulders as far as how to approach Georgia Department of Transportation. Sometimes they're easy to work with, but we find most of the time, they tend to see things one way.
Mm-hmm.
But if you can give good evidence as to why something should be done differently, then, then, you know, I'm, I'm sure Terry would be the best person to help you navigate that process as well, assuming we can get to that point. Because I haven't looked at the alignment, I don't, or the concept, I'm not really su, I haven't even looked at what the environmental issues are. Typically, those things take place between the District Commissioner and our DOT in those initial phases, and it typically only comes to the full board when it becomes a major issue or when we're ready to award a bid or on design cost and, you know, things like that. So typically, it takes place at the district level.
I see.
But I would encourage you to stay in contact with Mr. Holder as well. He's a good advocate for his citizens.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have one other public comment, and that's from Robert Tony. And Mr. Tony, if you would...
He was late to the year of his time, he wasn't prepared today, so he would like to thank the board.
Okay. All right, thank you. Mr. County Manager, anything from public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
The upcoming meetings and events, Monday, September nineteenth at nine AM and Tuesday, September twentieth at six-thirty PM, we have regular meetings. Monday, October third at nine AM, we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, October fourth at nine AM, we have a regular meeting. And also, I want to note on Tuesday, September the thirteenth, from six to eight PM here in the community room, there will be a presentation from the Atlanta Regional Commission on the proposed regional transportation sales tax vote that will be coming up next July. And they will be here to talk specifically about Henry County's projects and other significant projects in the region. And again, that meeting is from six to eight PM, and we certainly encourage our citizens to come out and participate in that process. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. I need a motion to reconvene into public session. Motion by Mr. Stamey and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. At this time, I need a motion to amend the agenda and to approve a general release and settlement agreement for property located at five-zero-four La Guin Mill Road. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Alata, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries four zero. We stand adjourned.